Fire and looking high at the states of the very in two republic for least sustenance, one nation under God in the invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Brings us down. We have no special recognitions presentations brings us down to delegations. We do have one delegation Karen Bowman of Bridgeport. Reminder that each delegation has five minutes to speak.
Nervous when you get started. Hey, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the school board. Thank you for having me here this evening. My son is a first grader at a Harrison County school and right before winter break, I received this letter in his packet stating that regarding the excuse and unexcused policy change for the end of the year. So if he has five or less starting on January 5th, then his last day of school was May 30th, 31st, and if he has one unexcused, it is June 5th. Now, this infuriated me, but not for the reason you may think. It infuriated me because I think he should go to school till June 5th. I, the reason that I'm so upset is he's in first grade. They had the same, they get the same thing through law of the first graders. His hardest spelling word to date is fish, fish in the middle of first grade. And I understand kids need to be in school. They really do. But what are we also teaching the kids? So I, I, they need to be in school. I help my kid. I make him, I'm the mean mom. I make him write his spelling word every night. I was told by the teacher, he had an assignment all the kids had to do, and he was the only one that didn't complain because my mom made me do it. He was the first one done it on hers. So, you know, I think it's important kids need to be in school. It's also important what they are learning. So I like solutions to problems. So I'm going to offer a couple because in the letter, and I agree, the kids need to be in school. I'm a mom in first grade, first time. I'm confused what an excused and unexcused absentee is. You know, I submit it on the online. I hear nothing. I send a letter back. I hear nothing. Is it excused? If it's acceptable, I don't know. My kid was sick right before Christmas. I asked the teacher. I sent it online. She's like, no, you also have to send a letter to the school. So I'm really confused as a parent, what I'm supposed to do for excused and unexcused absences. Same with educational. I pull my, my son out the week of Veterans Day and I contacted the teacher ahead of time. Do I need to fill out anything for educational? They said, no, just fill out after when you come back. They also informed me, oh, because of the, that week, a lot of the people aren't going to be sending their kids. So you're not going to miss anything. Well, that was crazy to me that, that the teacher told me this. And it was like, okay, that's a rebuke. Well, again, me mom, I'm writing this stuff down for my kid. You know, we have snow, snow packets. Have sick day packets, right? Like option three. I know when I miss a day to work, I hate it because the work doesn't stop. You know, same with, with the kid. Send something home or have, hey, read, read a book or read something, you know, continue the education. So maybe a kid doesn't want to miss school because of the work, though. And then I, I think of this because, so during Christmas break, my kid got sick and watched way too much TV. So I, again, me mom, gave my son a math test. I thought it was simple, 20 questions. I realized he did not know math. He's getting his math good, but he didn't know what six plus seven was. So that was the first time that I realized as a parent that my son wasn't getting it. Now, I, he can see trends. So I think that's what's going on with him. And I want my son to know these things. And I, that's what I feel like as a letter of expectation to the parents saying, hey, do five minutes with your kid. But I asked the teachers, hey, tell me what to do. I'm not a teacher. I don't know what to do. So that's, that's my big thing is a little help. Like, hey, I make my kid write it because that's what I grew up doing. I don't know if it's right. I don't know if it's wrong. I just do what I think is right. So my desire is really twofold. Um, is look at the curriculum, you know, what are we teaching? What are we doing? You know, fish, really? We're halfway through first grade. Um, so, and then my second one is, you know, I hope you consider these in-service days. This week is really tough. You know, we had to take vacation because school doesn't start till Thursday this week. So knowing when these start, first and last day is really hard for the working parent. So I leave you with this one last start in my last 15 seconds. I really appreciate you letting me speak this evening. Um, I just want to remind you, in 10 to 12 years, these kids are my colleagues and I will have high expectations for them. So I want to make sure the school has high expectation of them as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Butler. And we, just to let you know, we can't interact with delegations. But if you want to wait till after being, I'm sure Ms. Stutler would speak with us.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
It brings us down to Superintendent Sutte.
Mr. President, um, we had, we have several things going on this week. Just wanted to let you know, we have, I know we have the two days returning and we've been able to get hours training done at the Bridgeport campuses. That was completed today. They're moving. It's the active shooter training. They'll be moving to the Nutterford campus in Norwood tomorrow. So they were able to get about six schools completed when that's an annual training as well. So just to give you an update, we also got an update on the pro officer that we had the announcement. And they turned that around pretty quickly and they've done the interviews. The sheriff's department has done the interviews and that person will be starting tomorrow on the campus already. So that was a quick turnaround. Officer Navarini.
Deputy Navarini.
Deputy Navarini. I do not know him, but I guess he's a local, local guy. The pro houses, I believe, are in the works. We were talking about state. I think that the optioneers are looking at the options for the pro houses. So that's happening right now. We had a call about the one that Big Elm today. I hadn't had a chance to talk to, to Mr. Lopez. So we're working on that. School audits and finance have been completed. They were completed prior to Christmas. The schools should be getting those results.
Probably next week.
So we try to get those done before the first of the year. What else do I know? I think that's it. Other than we've got other teacher trainings happening around the county right now on these two days as well. That's all. Mr. Lopez, do you have an update on facilities or transportation?
I will say, starting tomorrow morning between 7:30 and 8, that the school buses are going to be running their routes. And the, the reason for that is we had a lot of heavy winds and we want to make sure that the buses can get into their turnarounds and make sure they can safely travel to and from school on Thursday. Um, that's not uncommon that we do that. Plus with the cold weather, we just want to make sure everything's performing correctly. I think it, uh, that was a suggestion by both Tommy Bornash and my bus supervisors to do that. I've also been in contact with the state road. If we do have any areas of pockets of concern, they'll go right out and remove the branches for us. Also, we, we did have a training with the school bus drivers today. We had, um, part of Homeland Security Transportation Security Administration. They came out and they did a drill prior to Christmas. They planted some things on some school buses. A hundred percent rate of our drivers found those during their pre-trips. Um, and then we did a training today and that is part of an anti-terrorism, um, training. And, and we did extremely well. So it was very positive training. Um, Big Elm had a little bit of a problem over, I got a call Christmas night. Uh, the sprinkler pipe above the kitchen ceiling ruptures. And, uh, so it caused some water in the kitchen, in the cafeteria and down the hallway. And it did get into some classrooms. We sent people out. We got it cleaned up. Uh, still probably cleaning. It, it only got up maybe an inch or so. It was all fresh water. But if there was any boxes on the floor or anything, you know, some of that maybe was damaged, possibly a couple bottoms of the shelves. But it was fairly minor considering it probably ran for several layers.
And it happened more than just us.
Oh, it happened more than state of West Virginia.
My new building.
Yeah. So we're going to be working on our mowing contract and we're working on the RFP for that. We'll be meeting with Mario, Danny and I will be. Um, we are really for the RFP, we're trying to work on the locale so that we can get more competition and more mowers available to be able to do these. In the past, I know, um, when Joe was here, he would take everybody out. Problem is then you'd have very few people that actually, it looked like we had a lot of interest. And then when they saw the vast amount of grass that they had to cut, only larger companies are able to handle that. Um, and then they get behind depending on, on the growing season. So we're really trying to break that up to try to get more contractors, uh, bidding on that. It's been a sense of, it's been a concern mine because, you know, we really like our properties to look nice. And when they get behind, they're just flying from school to school and it's not doing as good a job as they could. And I can't completely blame them. They just don't have enough manpower to handle it. So we're hoping to, um, improve that with the way that we, we divide our locales out. So that the previous board had some real concerns with the mowing contracts. We're, we're trying to get ahead of the game.
And you do get calls at the
Oh, absolutely. We get calls and think if the, uh, the grass is blown off the sidewalk, if a bank isn't cut. And there's things, and I used to make those calls when I was a principal too. Um, you want your property to look nice by your schools. And, and I think that we should. So it's just a matter of getting it manageable so that we can get enough contractors to bid on these, keep the price, you know, in a reasonable range. And they can, you know, a lot of times they'll look at it and they think they can do it. And the next thing you know, they have people quit working, equipment failure, just the overhead cost and, and, but we've had problems with that.
Two, I noticed like you talk about, you know, they get behind or whatever. Sometimes where I live, they come over to Nutterford to cut, you know, the front. I mean, it doesn't care if it's in monsoons coming down. You know, they get, they're out there running that mower, cutting the grass, grass is wet. And then it looks like there's tracks everywhere. You know, it takes several days for, you know, to dry out, get itself back in shape. I would think that that might be something I talk to them about, you know, to try to catch the grass, you know, when the weather's dry rather than when it's a monsoon season.
Absolutely. I agree with that. Sometimes they'll, they get into weeks of, of rain and they just can't get to it. And it's, they have to try to do what you're talking about. Uh, and it's not a good practice. It's unhealthy for the grass and, or the kids that have to play in it.
Right. And contractors that we have last year that actually didn't work or was just
And they just, they worked herself to death. Uh, originally there was three and I think one of them quit. And so they were divided. The way it was divided up, it was just, um, overwhelming to them. And they even told the staffs. Um, but we made it through. Uh, and it's just, so we're hoping to get more.
And there were some issues too with the way it was bid. The first, the last time it involved the pesticides and the way it was bid, we had some issues with the bid. So I'm hopeful with the breakdown and, and taking those into consideration this time, we should have better luck.
I think
Uh, because pesticides, when you add those in, only certain people survive. And it, it made a difference in our bids. And, and so if you look at that, that may, that may change the way, uh, and the types of companies, the more companies we would have access.
Yeah.
If, if we had to do a pesticide whole separate contract or whatever, but when you required someone to have that pesticide license, you may have someone that's really good at landscaping, but they don't have that. So they don't bid on it because it's in there. You know, maybe that's something we look at as an order. I could pull that out and have a separate pesticide bid. One company gets that and then you have a lot more bids, uh, from people who don't have to worry about the pesticides. But you have to be licensed. And then what we, what we had was we would have some did bid because they didn't have it. And you had some that kind of partnered with a company that had it. And then you had other ones saying, well, that's not fair. And it, it was, it was a bit of a chore that last bid. So I'm, I'm looking forward to this bid.
One other thing that I've forgotten to mention is we have a policy committee meeting tomorrow. Is that at 1:00 and 1:00 on 1 o'clock to address some of the policies that we've talked about earlier?
I just brought that up because I had received a, um, communication from someone that said we may have had some overs, uh, some misstep in regards to our policy 4103. Seems, it seems that there was a policy put out. 4103 was put out on, um, in September for, for review. Um, and it was changed during that timeframe. And on December 3rd, the verbiage was different. So I want to send this to you so that you can investigate a little bit of it. Uh, because, you know, I, I don't want us to put something out there, have people review it and look at it and get comment on it and then bring it back and then we change it and don't put it back out for review or another comment. So I'll, I'll forward this over to you.
Was that the number of days?
It was the number of days. Correct. Uh, we discussed that nights on the typo and I didn't, I mean necessarily when I looked at it and asked, you don't necessarily have to put it back out. I understand where you're coming from. We could have put it back out.
Posted comments received.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that it wasn't anything oversight.
We, we just caught a typo that night. Uh, and we discussed it.
Okay.
In an open meeting. So
Okay.
But I understand.
Did you receive an email?
Yes.
Yeah.
The same one. The same one you were just talking about.
Was it the 20th person?
The email that I received? No, it was, uh, same thing.
Any worst case scenario, we put it back out and we bug on again. It's going to be, I mean, because the public comment still doesn't change the fact that the vote.
No, no, no. I understand. I understand. I just want to make sure it's not correct.
And
So I'll, I'll forward this up to you.
We move on. I want to go back. Mr. Lopez, you was talking about the, uh, the property stuff, pro officers horns and everything. And I know one time, and maybe this isn't even possible, but you had talked about one time you might want to move some of your buses back to Lincoln. Was that not mentioned? You never, never mentioned that. You must have sucked it out.
I think you were, you were always saying it's, we, and I think same way you did. There was probably even state moving them to
Well, yeah, they're, they're, they're so spread. Yeah, they're, they're so centralized that there's a lot of, they call them deadhead miles in transportation. So, but I, and if you're, um, thinking about that piece of property, whether we could park buses there, uh, we might be able to park a few. It's in a permanent school, which is good, but it's not
You're talking about the Big Elm piece?
Yeah.
How big of a piece of property is that? It's not great.
It's not. You might be able to put a few buses.
So you're talking to Big Elm, right? Back at the Lincoln practice.
That would be hard to, to do that.
I mean, I knew, that's why I got to thinking, well, maybe possibility, taking one of the, the houses that we have and putting it on the property, if we was going to put some of the buses back, because you have to have a place for them.
Well, we still have that, the building that used to be the terminal.
Yeah.
Now being used by the sheriff.
Yeah.
Sheriff's.
We need it.
But I don't know whether, you know, where we could maybe put one of the pro officers' houses on that property, you know, for the bus drivers to be used like we did.
And it may be an option. You have four or five buses that are in that far end of that county. You know, and that'd be your logistics to know that instead of them driving from, on the Margaret run or something that's way out there, back in there, they can pick it up with Big Elm and
Right.
It goes. So
One of the problems has always been a point of contention with the amount of traffic in and out of the Lincoln parking lot over there. Because there, there's so many activities now. There's more now than ever. So to move those buses back would be convenient in some ways, but the bus drivers used to, every time there was an event, they'd have to go and they'd have to move them over to the high school. That, that made them have, that was
I think in what, if there's four or five spaces for buses that are in to go to Big Elm, if they, if you have some terminal, that's going to be electric and things.
Because, because the home, Big Elm, that man
Is in the process of getting
And that's just, so I was just wondering, you know, when we did
But we have the other two.
15 acres of We have the
The bus number is one of ours.
See if they're saving, it's been personally, how many plus?
South Harrison in that one.
With South Harrison, it's a, it's a permanent structure. And we really need the property. So we can't really sell, we have to hold property. So I think we're, we're probably going to have to consider demolishment. I think, because it's, you know, with the, the property is way more valuable than the house to us. Um, you know, we could develop that in parking lot or whatever we would need. But it's actually the only other property that we have that is not being utilized as, you know.
You must talk about the old state police there. It crawls from Lincoln.
It's already been sold.
Oh.
Oh, it hasn't been.
Yeah. It's so upstairs for sale. Again, I see a sign to the person that wanted to develop it, I guess somewhere. I was just thinking because that's on a Thursday night and a Friday night, as you know, had to move those buses by and I don't know how much I property is right thing, but it's a lot. The southern, southern
Unfortunately, we spent a bunch of money moving it. I, I, I didn't agree with that there, but
We have 20 some buses down there. 23.
21, 22.
22. Well, it's also, since we had the pieces of property and if one of the homes could be moved onto the side, you know, utilized for your convenience and for your driver's convenience.
It's always your option.
I mean, I just
Maybe place a few on that side. You know, because it is, if you're coming from that end to try to clear in the door and then back, it's all
Yeah, I mean fuel wise after a while.
No, well, other than, we've got a lot of interviews scheduled. We're starting tomorrow with the elementary specialists. That's interviewing tomorrow. And then we have quite a few candidates for the coordinators job. So that, that's two days. It's Thursday, Friday, and then Bridgeport General is scheduled for next Tuesday.
You have a question? Survey?
Yeah, the survey results we've gotten. Has Lola shared those yet? Okay. I know she was collecting.
She has. She's gathered. Some of the principals had not.
That's, that's different.
Try to get a
Get copies of such.
Okay. That is, moves down to approval consent items. Is there a motion?
So
We move to seconded. Any discussion?
I did have a question about, there's just inside the consent items, there's a purchase from Amazon for 25,000 and it doesn't have any explanation on what it is.
An Amazon purchase is going to be broke up into probably about 1,000 invoices.
Okay.
Um, so whenever we, whenever we do a batch, um, we have to key every single one and it collects them all together and wants them gathered. So
Okay, so it's nice indeed.
Or, or the street service, you'll see like a large amount. We didn't get an invoice for 15,000. We got 152 invoices, eight for all milk and all and everything else. And so every time Zach and Monica key an invoice, it batches it into a tote. So I can get you a breakdown of the Amazon purchases.
Yeah, I, I just, I just wanted to make sure. I just, I had that on C before. So I wanted to make sure.
Like I said, and with the Amazon, it gets charged to one D card. So at the end of the month, we reconcile that D card and then we make the payment to that D card. So that's why the Amazon was usually a large, is because it's not just a day or one purchase or anything else like that. That's the whole month of Amazon purchases that we pay.
Okay.
So we try to encourage our teachers to go to places, but unfortunately sometimes with budgets, it's
Sure. No, I understand. I, I just didn't, I didn't understand why Amazon's 25K. I thought that might be a nice, uh, TV or something. I don't know.
It's, it's, it's See, that purchase was the whole entire month.
And I, I don't know if
November?
Yes. Because I, I've been kind of the one that, every year against using Amazon and rather use local. Unfortunately, just because of brick and mortar stores anymore, sometimes you just, there's no local place to get certain things. I still want to encourage our people to use local businesses whenever possible. But I do know, I, I used to be a hardliner against it. But I know from my own standpoint, you can look everywhere in town, in the whole county, you can't find it. And sometimes you're stuck doing that. So I do, I do understand a little bit more than I used to.
Um, on this take communications, spare cameras. And it says spare cameras. Does that mean, are they replacement cameras or are they up for grabs or what?
We're, we're trying to little by little replace the older cameras on the county.
Okay. And then I, I've seen this before, this National Youth Advocate. It says therapy, November 2022. Is this, I've seen it before. What is that?
Project Aware.
Okay.
And that is one of the therapists that we contract through that they pay them. We pay once a year. We draw down money and we pay. I don't know how much you're looking at, what your total is there.
It's 10,550.
So we must pay in increments, but
Yeah, because this one says November. I, I've seen it before.
Therapist. Is that what that is? Okay.
All right. Anything further?
We have four.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. New business Simpson Elementary School roof HVAC replacement. Jill's not here to say after, after all this, we finally
Take her air point.
Get her a roof. So there it is in front of you. And that's, uh, what, what is your recommendation?
Well, so we, the, the recommendation is to take the base bid of 1,642,106 dollars. And that replaces a large majority of the roof. There's two sections of the roof that we, uh, in talking to Danny and also the architect, they're less than 10 years old. And so to replace those when they still have at least 15 years left and isn't, it's not prudent at this time. And we might be able to push some of our, um, you know, spending on, on future projects. It's not compromising.
That's
The integrity of the building whatsoever.
That's it. So
Right.
Because they're separate roofs.
They, oh, they're absolutely separate. Yeah. So, um, so the recommendation is to be able to, uh, accept that ADI's base bid.
And ADI is, uh, we got the background on them.
Oh, yeah. They, they did check out. Um,
Where are they from?
Ohio. So I had never heard of them. Um, but they evidently had some connection with, was it Marge Weston, I believe, which is a contractor in our area. So I, anyway, uh, we met with them on, um, it was prior to Christmas and had all the contractors together. The architect had a good meeting. Um, and, you know, they're hoping to put a plan together, be able to start working on at least the first section of roof that is really needing replaced. So
Mr. Lopez is, um, I'm thinking I remember from the last meeting, it's actually a local contractor. They're going to
So roofing actually is, yes, is being hired by that contractor because the ADI is that they, they're a mechanical, um, company. So, so Sutter's going to actually do the, the roofing for them.
ADI will do more of the HVAC.
That's
Okay, they'll do the HVAC and they subcontract.
And the only other things we'll have to, we'll have to contract out some of the control work, which is will be minimal. The same control just had to be programmed. And that's also a local company.
Is there a motion to accept the, uh, bid and the amount of 1,642,106 dollars from ADI for HVAC and roofing renovation Simpson Elementary School?
So moved.
So moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
We could have bought a lot of buckets. That money.
Although it's Yeah, we already did.
Yeah.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. No old business, no policy updates, personnel matters. It's in front of you. Opposed. Motion carries no old business, no policy updates, personnel matters. It's in front of you. Is there a motion? Get it on the floor.
Their motion. Do you want to move into executive session? Is there? I can make a motion to move pursuant.
Can I have a question then? Is it on? On an item from the personnel?
It's on an item that is it could be on job description.
But that doesn't list any person.
Okay.
Uh, so that's not eligible for executive session. If it's a person that you're dealing with, but if it's the job description on there, then we have to add that.
Okay.
In the open forum. So if there's any questions, if you want to move it to get it on the floor and then we can.
I'll move to get on the floor. I'll move to accept the personnel agenda and job descriptions as recommended.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Discussion.
So the questions that I have are to, um, and I don't have any questions about communities and site coordinator. I I know those are those are monies that are given to us by the state, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, there's.
Grant father.
Grant, so I don't have a problem with that. Uh, the coordinator of certification, why are we changing it to a professional position? And, uh, let me get my question on here. So and and why are we why are we requiring a master's degree and and what what master's type of certification is there for this position?
Sure.
Um, the reason that we're even we even looked at that, and it's a tough decision to change any job when it's been service, it's been an executive secretary for as long as it has been to make it professional. That job has had four people in the in the last year. Um, they're they're coming in and they're not staying. They're not even really staying long enough to train. So we were just really looking at another avenue to try to keep someone in the position that will learn the job and and stay in the position. That was really the main reason. The reason it has a master's is some counties have that job already as a professional. So I reached out to other superintendents. I happened to get one, a pretty comprehensive job description from Tom Williams in Canova County. He sent me his job description and they require masters because it's a coordinator job. And all of our other coordinators in the county, they require masters. That's where that came from. That can be changed. I mean, I've seen it. I got one job description from Ritchie County. It's a specialist. It's a certification specialist, and that's all they do is teacher certification. So it's various forms across the state. But we have had four people in the position that have they they come in, they say this last one was there about.
We need to talk to him.
Danny more about.
Do we know why they left? Why they keep leaving?
Um, you could. They they go into to different departments within county office. Yeah, they 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 come in and move in to that position and then they go another secretary. Because it is, it's the time constraints with it too, like the deadlines. There's a lot of deadlines, like all the teacher certifications all are coming due in June. We notify all those teachers that their certifications are due. It's just a lot of deadlines, same way in personnel. And it's you can't really be off every other week because we're either putting out an agenda or and they they will say, I don't care for that.
But I don't think we need a master's degree because a deadline's due.
No, I that's that was just because it was a coordinator. If you are requiring that to be every other coordinator in our county that's a master's level because of coordinator pay. You'd like to look at that in a different.
Specialist.
Specialist, you might we could we could look at that. I mean, that's it was just really honestly to try to get some consistency in the position.
And I I mean, I agree. It costs way more and and I hate to give up. Understand where we're coming from because I hate to take a lot of service for it and take this job away and make it professional, but we are over a lot in service and we're not over. I mean, we're pretty low in professional, so that's not the argument more. And I do I do have passions in fact that it costs a lot more to train someone and continually train them when they're not staying the job. So that's where I come from. But I do agree. I mean, we want to move it down until a lesser scale, someone who is still professional, but they stay there.
I mean, it's it's a it's a tough decision.
I think I think we're we're in general, we're just over though, correct? I I over and serve and over professional.
By adding that one, we would have according to according to State Department, we'd have fourteen. Um, that would move us from thirteen to fourteen. Whatever these are up here when you're talking about superintendent, assistant, administrative assistant, director, coordinator, that puts it to fourteen, where two years ago we were at eleven. So we've already increased
I think.
in that area three because three professional positions.
But I think you're good wanting someone that stays.
Exactly.
I mean.
But just a game.
But they stayed for all those years. I don't understand why they're not staying now.
Professionals and they're like also.
Not in that. We've never.
No, there's not never been a profession in that. Yeah.
It's just I don't want us to continue. We we did a good job producing over the past few years, the the county level administration.
We have.
And I I don't want us to get to a point where we start increasing again, especially before we started paying attention to the classroom and getting the professional people that we need in the classroom and the service people we need in the classroom. So I I don't. Maybe we could put this on the table for a while. Is it this? How how necessarily quick do you need it?
It's it's an open position where I'm doing two positions at one time, and I also have someone who's brand new in the department as well who's just learning. So I mean, I'll do the best I can. I know personal season's coming up. So I mean, with.
Would you want to post them back as the secretary one more time and see?
Which is what they want.
You know, you could do that and see because we did talk about that.
Then we wouldn't be abolishing the position.
No, you would have to not abolish the secretary. They give secretary position.
So you have to you have to change that on personnel on the personnel agenda.
I that change, I believe, but.
I mean, I spoke about thought that, uh, you know, there's been so many, you know, executive secretaries or whatever that have we've had.
How many substitutes?
You know, it's get to the point where they they don't even get they don't even get to see one before they bid out to bid into something else.
Where I. We just don't have the it's like everywhere. We just don't have the bank of people and when they and they could move, but they come in and they don't care for the job. They can just move. Where before there weren't jobs available to move into. Now they come in. They try for three or four weeks or a month. They don't care for it. There's somewhere for them to go. It's the same way with teachers or it's just very different. Where before we'd have an executive secretary's position and you'd have nine or ten applicants that be school secretaries all wanting to make the move in and they stayed and then we would put secretary at the school. Now they're coming right off the sub list and taking every secretary job. We're getting brand new people. The one that we had in payroll that just left right off the sub list came right into payroll, no school experience, nothing. She did a great job, but she she wanted the two hundred day, but she did that to get her foot in the door, you know? They're doing good jobs, but there's other opportunities is what I'm saying for before.
Second.
You know, my thing, my thing too is.
I don't know the answer.
If if you pay a professional position and say somebody leaves somewhere else in another outside of the system to, you know, come into this job. You know, they're more apt to stay than somebody who, like you say, is moves in, don't like the job. Okay. But I could bid on this job over here and whereas if you have the professional person, they're not going to say, well, I just left this job to take this job.
We just had that happen with our, uh, the health. What was it? The coordinator?
Mental health.
That the mental health coordinator just did that same exact thing you're referring to. She was here for two months and she's gone.
Well, I mean, that's what I say, you know.
So that that scenario can still happen.
Oh, it can.
Oh, absolutely.
But it, you know, I think it'd be more have to not happen.
We were just trying to get stability. What's that?
We didn't we just lose a professional to one county or someone. You're like.
Yeah, that was. Our secretaries left and the professional position.
I think we have an overall problem that we really need to analyze what's going on and figure out what's happening and why all of this moving around and and actually leaving uh, the county administration, even if principal administration and leaving Harrison County and and not necessarily retiring. They're actually leaving for other positions and sometimes for other positions outside of education for lower pay. We got a problem, I think, and we got to figure out what that problem is. And I don't think adding another position including the professional accountant position, which we haven't talked about yet, okay, is is the thing to be doing right now until we figure out what the real problem is.
I I do honestly think that part of it is is there's just so many opportunities. You can go anywhere and and they can where before it was a risk for us to move, like it would be a risk. Now they can make a move. They can look at the county next door and see something better. They're going to hire them. We're hiring about anybody that comes through that door that's certified. We're getting just as many from other counties as we have leaving. We have how many that's starting next year for Barry and Taylor? It's happening all over and I don't know. Talk about that in our state conference. There's just, yeah, there's just opportunities for people to move. And that part of it is people are frustrated with public education. It's not as glamorous and we're not as respected as it. There's a lot to it. Covid didn't help. The opportunities have have changed. People like remote work. So we've got several that are leaving to do remote work. They they did remote for a year. They come back to work. They want to go back to remote. That was one situation we had. She just liked remote work. And she's got it available. You can get it. Where before that wasn't even on the table, working from home and being alone with your children and getting paid. And now there are opportunities for that. It's just the workforce has changed a lot, even in the five years that I I don't know the right answer to it. We would hire fifty people to walk through that door. And I think that's the frustration. We can't hire enough people to keep the ones that are good people from getting so discouraged.
So we have any.
Yeah, we need stops.
The feedback from I think possibly the school survey, we could ever get that, um, maybe that would help us understand what was going on. And then the other thing would also be, I mean, do they do that at at the county office level? Is there some sort of satisfaction survey going on at the county? I don't. It it, you know what I mean? At the county office level, it did that survey work there too? I don't think it did.
It don't.
Because it's individual schools. Perhaps we need to do something like that where they can actually tell us why are you moving basically, why are you moving around? But maybe they'll give us some hint as to what their dissatisfaction with what's going on is. If we had that information, then possibly we can actually address some of their concern.
That's it. It's a steamrolling effect too. You have someone that leaves or whatever. When they leave, this person has to do double duty to can get filled. They get burned out and continue.
Well, just like like Doug said, you know, we're not moving people until a certain day. Is can you not do that with? Isn't there something where it says you have to stay in a position for X amount of days?
Not there. But only only if they're dealing with a child.
But federally, I mean, not just, I mean, I thought there was something.
They come in here and and it's happened. Service will take a job and they've already bid on another job or they're.
We had that. That just happened. She didn't actually even take the job.
Hundred percent seniority.
You had.
Bridge on board meeting and the next day applied for them.
And there's nothing that could be done about that.
Not not that.
Like.
That's in code, state code.
The only thing is, uh, aides that are working with children with autism, we can make them stay in a position.
And they want to, you know, obviously they come to work here. Some of them just want to get back to the school because they want.
That's what the last one told was she really.
They look to here to get off the sub list. They take the job here and then they move into a school even for lesser pay because they're not executive secretary. Correct?
Mm hmm, right.
And then just because they want summers off. That's our only way to get into this.
Executive secretaries here are paid. I mean, at a rate.
Yeah.
Well, I remember we we did that some years back and and we brought everybody up to the same level.
Right.
No, that was before us. That was.
No, we we did a few that were not executive secretary.
No, the executive secretary.
We had accountants. We made everybody.
But the executive secretaries before Doug and I even got here, the year before that, they changed the classification. Every secretary in this building got reclassified as executive secretary.
Right.
Whereas in other counties, the executive secretary is superintendent, and that's the only executive secretary. Previous administration changed everyone to executive and it's made it real difficult on hiring here because they just.
We have the second secretary to Johnson because they really need that and she just had a revolving door in that position. She gets somebody, this new sub comes in and I hope she does now will stay. I hope they get someone to, or I mean, I hope that they stay. But it's just, it's really affecting. We the the payroll is a consistency thing too. We haven't had anybody in there really to train. They're not staying long enough to train. Um, and it's a difficult because people, you know, payroll, you get angry if you don't get your paycheck.
Right.
And in order to learn that job, there's going to be mistakes made.
This this, um, the job we're talking about changing to professional right now, um, is has it been bid out as a service job yet? So we don't know that if anybody would apply for it. I mean, there might be some people that would apply for it as a service job still.
Oh, I'm sure there's someone who will apply.
But it wouldn't be if you can do it as service under that classification.
No.
You've had someone, you've had four people in as service, correct?
Absolutely.
In that same division.
In one year. You're right. Yes, in the year.
But you you can't. I mean, we could rebid it out and see what you if it's service, understand where you're coming, but it wouldn't be if this.
We kind of did that.
Job description wouldn't be the same. No, no, it would be this job description right here.
Right, but see.
Be the same job description.
We just posted out this and, you know, take that off the agenda and it'll off the job description for later.
Where we were.
If you'd ever, I mean, you can have the job description. You don't have to.
But that's that shows you where we were completely.
You don't have to post.
When they may, when they change the classification to all executive secretary, because you have nowhere to elevate to. You know, if you're all executive secretaries, you're going to laterally move throughout this building. But if if it wasn't, then you could attain, you know, you could have taken this position and said, well, we'll make it an executive secretary. So it would be a little higher and someone would have been into that job. But now anyone that comes into the building is an executive secretary.
Here's what.
It just.
This is, yeah, I I understand. It is difficult. But but once we make that jump.
You're correct. I know what you're saying.
You can't go back. Right? So if if something would happen like Doug was talking about, where the preparer, my friend was talking about where uh, a professional comes in and then leaves six months later or five months later, we're stuck with this professional job. Well, we could abolish it.
Yeah.
I mean, abolish it. I understand. I understand. But if we can't change the classification back. So I I that's kind of my heartburn.
Well, if you if you abolished it and then created it again.
Right.
And then you can change your job description.
Okay.
But it's hard to go back.
But it's yeah, it's hard to go back.
Definitely. Yes, it is.
If we're looking ahead, there are some things that that looking ahead might happen and trickle down in the future that other things may have to change. Just without saying what I'm trying to say out loud. You know, um, with the possible movement of 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 things tightening up. So we've got other things that are going to transpire.
So in other words, it sounds to me like what we're hearing is you'd rather run it one more time, at least one more time as a service job. And where it goes and you get somebody hired. But if it doesn't work that time, then I think you come back.
And I think that's what we did with the others. We've already done that with the finance when we said, let's run it again. Okay, same thing happening. So I'm I'm agreeing with that. Do it on this, but.
I will. I will agree with that. If we do it one more time as a service perfect service personnel and we don't get anybody that stays in the job, then okay, all right. But I but I do want to see the survey. I I do. I do think that's a good idea. County office.
County office survey.
Yeah, I do think that's a good.
There's all kinds of workplace surveys. It won't be a.
I mean, you could do like something with Survey Monkey and and everybody knows that because it's anonymous.
So would you like for that description? That's your recommendation to. That's your recommendation to. For that description, is that your recommendation?
To pull the jobs.
Sure. You'll have to. Uh, yeah, you have to, you'll have to create back the, it's. Take the abolishment off of that executive secretary, yeah, like.
So, you know, if the, if the job, if you hold the job description and you can, you, as superintendent, your recommendation, you can alter it before we. Do it, so that's your recommendation to do that.
To pull this current job description and take the. Abolishment off of the executive secretary for personnel.
Okay. So with that. That's the superintendent's recommendation, so with that. Okay, we've already had the motion in the second for remainder personnel matters.
Can you talk about the professional accountant position?
Okay.
Payroll position. It's the same, we're in the same situation there.
Because you're taking that, that executive secretary and turning it into the professional accountant.
Right.
We already have two, right?
Yeah, but here's where I differ on this.
We have three now.
Three since April.
We have three since April, this will make four.
How many did we have?
This will make it four executive secretary if we propose this service.
I think you've lost two different things.
No, how many accountants do you have?
Two professional accountants.
And this is where I'll differ from the first one, I agree with the first one, with Mr. Vono on that, let's post it one more time. But as Doug and I were just discussing, you know, saying there, uh, this is, this is the end result of that. We already discussed that on this posi, position we were going to create as professional, and we said, let's go out and rebid it. Let's repost it as executive secretary again, and it still didn't work, so that's where I come from is. We already gave the, you know, the, uh, the dynamite charge, I guess, of let's do it one more time, we already did it on this position, so I don't. You know, I'm, I'm in favor of doing this position because if we were going to do it on one, say, let's give it one more shot, we've already given it one more shot on this, so.
So what's the problem with, with going with two, like we have for the past, over how many years? Of having two professional accountants, now are we adding a third?
Well, we had two professionals and a service, correct, and we always had that service.
Right, the service. Actually, they switched positions because Jonathan was a professional and he did the service payroll. Now we have a professional doing a professional payroll, and that was changed, well, I actually changed that from a professional to an executive secretary. When Jonathan left, tried to put it back. Yeah, but.
This would be restored.
But Mitzi, when she left, she was actually service, she, she was actually under service, but she was a payroll supervisor. She was a coordinator. What was her degree in? It's been different, a different thing, but that's another one that she was. The last one took the job.
She was a service person.
She wasn't even, she had bid and was hired on this agenda before we could agree. So she didn't even train, she just pretty much answered, but she didn't stay, and it is.
So in doing so. It's going to be going from executive secretary to a professional accountant, what's the difference in the two? Where, what would they be doing, I, I'm just saying, we have two account, professional accountants, now where are they?
One professional accountant and accounts receivable, and has not been able to be an accounts receivable since she started, because she's had to be in payroll through every one of the.
She does step in and do payroll.
Steps in and helps with payroll. I've been handling the, you know, reports and everything else that, that her position was initially supposed to be doing. Because we've had such a turnover in the payroll. So Marion's had to jump back in to payroll every single time to help out, so she's not really a payroll accountant. She's, she's in another field, but unfortunately, she's just not been able to.
So why can't she just move to payroll?
Then we'll have her position open.
Exactly. Which would not be an executive or exec.
She's a professional accountant.
She is.
Yeah.
Doing payroll.
Oh, you mean make the executive secretary and then accounts receivable?
Yes.
Isn't that?
That's main statements, that's right inside, like, that's, yeah. Needs an accountant.
Okay, so where's the other?
That's missing, that we got.
So we've only had two accountants forever. Where were these other, where were they before, in those same two positions?
So, yes, there's always been one accountant payroll and one accounts receivable, because that would have been Jonathan and Tina Smith. Yeah, but it's the turnover, it was, it's the same situation with executive secretary, because it's a very.
Position's very demanding, because if there is issues or anything else, the, I mean, they're, they're getting picked up. And so, I, I, you know, it's hard to train somebody that's been, you know, out of a payroll experience to be a payroll. Person, they need time, and so that's where we felt a professional accountant would help out, because they would have an accounting background.
How many, how many? How many staff do you have now? Is it five and you, or four and you?
We have some professional staff.
Yeah, well, total staff, professional assets.
The purchasing director.
Eight.
Eight. Okay, and, and. So where were we two years ago, before we went through the changeover?
We, we, we went back to typical, yeah, we went back to where it was prior to that. We did add the trainer, Marsh is the new position, the trainer, secretary trainer. Other than that, it's, Marcia Quarter is a secretary trainer, um, executive secretary, that, that's a new position. Other than that, it's back to where.
That's what we proved.
It is back to normal, but it is a foreign position, they're a foreign position. From that, I know what you're talking about.
That's wrong, that's kind of what we want, you know what I mean?
You know, we've also, we've also redone our entire staff.
Right, right, I, I.
Did recommend.
And try to figure out how to run the system. So what was taking the former staff was time, because they knew that process and had been there for years upon years upon years. It's a brand new staff trying to forensically figure out most of their job.
Joseph's been there a year, your other accountants have been there six, seven, so none of them's really gotten with them. Okay, he's the most senior now. In the position, that's it, it's experience, it's bonding, it's learning, it takes any, it takes three years to learn any job, but it doesn't matter one of the. Two to three years, they're really hard.
What would the new person be doing?
Service payroll. Service payroll.
Well, can I, who did accounts receivable before, that had an accounting degree? I mean, or professional accountant.
Tina Smith.
Okay, so who did professional payroll?
Vincent Wright. Vincent Wright.
And was she an accountant?
She was not, she was a payroll supervisor.
She was a payroll supervisor that.
Well, wasn't it an accountant?
That worked her way up from just.
So we are going to make. We're going to make service personnel an accountant. But professional is not.
You have all accountants and payroll, that's what it would be.
Both of them would be accounts.
So there would be no more service.
Not in payroll, you have, oh no, you still have, your, your accounts payable people are.
Accountable or still service.
All right, there was a motion in the second, any further discussion, and this, this would include the removal of, of the job description. Uh, superintendent previously stated. Any further discussion?
Yeah, where are we going, where, where are we going to go with this? I'm, I'm still confused.
This is, this is a, uh, there's a motion on the table, this would be for the personal agenda and the job description for the. For the, uh, person in.
Well, it's just to pre, abolish the executive secretary and create an account, we didn't need a new job. It's just an account.
Yeah, that's in the, the account, if you're talking about.
Yeah, the only thing that was, was the portion for the personnel.
Do they have a coordinator?
And that, they really all three could cross. It's, so we just need stability.
So the motion is for the personnel agenda as presented, with the exception of the pulling of, of the coordinator for, for personnel.
Trying to get at that one.
Okay, personnel, so, uh, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Two twos.
Said no.
I'm just wondering if I need to recuse myself since I have somebody can, yeah.
No, because you wouldn't because there's no specific. There's no specific, you, you would. Yeah, there's no benefit to you because there are no, it would actually be the opposite of a benefit.
So what are we looking to do? If this is no.
It would just go back as an executive secretary, correct, just like we did. We'd maintain, maintain. Maintain where we are.
On the personal agenda.
Oppose them, and then, yeah, okay, yeah, and then the personnel agenda is going to be separate, yeah.
So your vote is?
I'm going to abstain.
Did you have to state your reason?
Well, I like the idea, because if we're voting, if I vote no, then what do we do about the first one?
Oh no, it's already, it's already gone, yeah, we, we've already.
She already voted first.
I'll vote.
So now we're just going to maintain on this.
So the motion fails, but that brings us back, we will have to have a, uh, a motion for the.
Regular person. Just checking on my brain.
I know, but, but the debate needs to be among the members. Uh, is there a motion for the personnel matters? The regular personnel with no job description and removing both of the, uh, create for those positions.
I'll make the motion out for the personal agenda.
Second.
Move to the second, any discussion on this? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? That's on the regular, just the regular personnel agenda. Okay, that's okay, so it's, it's four to one, so.
Okay.
Moves us down to, uh, board member comment, Mr. Tucker.
I feel like I lost more than I weeks.
Um, the policy committee, you said that we were going to be again with the policy committee, I actually had a couple of notes here, there are a few things. In regard to what we've got coming up in the future that, that might pertain to some of these policies that we need to review. Um, uh, the, the transfer, I know we're supposed to review policies every year, but specifically, I was, I was hoping that we could review the transfer policy. You could look and see if there's a lateral move policy. Okay, good, all right, um, bumping, the bumping, then the risk policy, and, and then check on first writing refusal policy, please.
Okay.
That, that would be something.
But we do have lateral move policy, right?
Yeah, I want to make sure we do that. Okay, good, thank you. All right, and that, that's all about.
Is there much in the chairman? Second, all those in favor say aye.
Exactly, that, that's why I'm.